We are live.
Yeah. Let's call this meeting of the February first meeting of Allen County Commission to Order. Please everybody, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. February already this morning. Supposed to be seventy degrees and we were just talking about raining this weekend, so. Well, that was a pretty nice morning stepping out this morning. I'm like what it's been earlier. Joy while it lasts, because that second winter will be coming around here shortly sometime soon.
It's just a tease.
Yeah. First winter, first spring, second winter, fake spring, then it's third winter, then actual spring. And then we.
Then summer.
Really don't get an annual spring. You tell me it's summer or a summer.
And then that first fall and then hell, summer again.
Kind of winter until August.
Yeah. What he said. Well, anyway, with that said, we'll move on to some public comments this morning if we have any. I know it's anybody up on Zoom currently, so. We have any, uh, like? Anybody from the gallery? You know what to say?
I always look at you, Clancy, and I'm expecting an executive session.
Big sense of unease.
Okay, well quickly, we'll close out public comments.
So now we have a chance for an executive session and stuff.
With that said, we'll move on.
There's already one on.
Yeah, no, we don't need to, so.
Nope.
We'll move on to Commissioner's comments and Commissioner's agenda.
All right. Well, Monday after a meeting of ours, Russell Stutey reviewed the staff change. He's back coming up and sort of just got an update on our department. And that's it. And that was Elizabeth to go with some questions on Department head evaluations. The afternoon, I got a call from a citizen about township roads that doesn't go away. The road to his house is in two townships and he said they seem to alternate. For a couple of years, one township does a good job and the other one's junk and the next, after a couple of years, they switch on him. But the whole thing has never been good. He's well in favor of us taking over. I said, there's no decision on that. Um, later in the afternoon, I attended the retirement reception for Greg McClure. At least well attended, a lot of people in there. Um, the evening. Uh, MRC PD Director Pete had his town hall meeting in Riley. They gave some statistics for twenty-three and reviewed plans that department had. The department had as going forward. And there were several other, you know, officers there going over some stuff. It wasn't so well attended. Most, most of it was, uh, easier present or former state commissioners. Let's see which ones were there. Oh, and Tuesday evening, we ate at Firehouse Subs. I hadn't been there, I guess. They have a display with the county fire department in there now and a handout sheet looking for volunteers. I hadn't noticed that before, but that was nice to see that. Then we had the grandkids with us, took them for dinner there and then went and took them to the K-State basketball game. Based on the results, they may not want to go with us.
Oh, yeah. You can't blame you for that.
Didn't stay the very end. I was ready to go. One of my granddaughters had, was talking to her friend, didn't want to leave, so we stayed at the full end. Well, uh, Wednesday, had a Zoom meeting with Ann Smith and Daphne McNelly about the ad of us. They're meeting with each of the members to discuss individually, to discuss the system and list some suggestions going forward. Um, and I had brought up a concern about perception of the system and Ann had a good exclamation for why things are said that aren't quite right about this stuff. And then, um, I think the bus stops they've added in the last two years is a good exposure for people to see them and I thought. And therefore, the next step would be putting in benches and all the stuff. Or you just have a little sign about this big. Until I was on there, I didn't realize where all these stuffs were. Right now, the city has an ordinance against putting up benches and we're gonna have to work on that.
Even inside the shelters or?
No, no, just.
On the other ones.
Just, uh, on the other ones have a bench there so people can see, because plus you can put an advertisement.
Sure.
You know, I mean, that's where most, most places have those kind of things. Just tell people see things. Um, there's a lot of, a lot of things always going on. They had a best different ideas. And then last night, we, uh, we went to Jesus Christ Superstar, became, there was a good introduction. It was good.
First time I saw that was at a Hearn.
The Hearn?
Uh huh. Oh, it was back in eighty-eight. Oh, yeah.
That's what I've got.
I don't have a whole lot. Um, but, uh, Monday afternoon, I had a pre-op appointment with my surgeon, got final details for next week. Um, Tuesday afternoon, I spent time here in the office going through paperwork, responding to email, phone calls, uh, going through various, a lot of documents that we have to look at. Um, uh, let's see, I also met with Cory Meyer on some various office issues. That evening, I went to a pre-game dinner with friends and then I watched the basketball game on TV. Didn't get to go, but that's fine. Um, Wednesday afternoon, I did some work at the church and later went to bell choir practice. Um, most of the week has been spent in preparing the house food schedule for the next two weeks. And I'll zoom into meetings as soon as I can, probably February twelfth. It's only half.
Well, it's kind of a little bit of a lighter week for me as well. Um, I too attended that retirement ceremony for Gleydell Gur. Um, I came in a little bit late, delayed the, uh, livestock association dinner later, so kind of. They make me sense to come and then leave and then come back, so, um, got a little piece of cake and was able to get some call hall ice cream early. Not to spoil my dinner, I was very, very careful about doing that, but got a chance to talk to a couple of people. I was there and just wanted to point it out that he served twenty-three years and around the county extension office and I believe twenty-two in the Clay Center office, so a total of forty-five years. Um, Greg was the first person I met in the extension office when I started here. They were still going through some transition, but um, I always enjoyed his energy and enthusiasm for things, so it'd be a hard personality to, um, replace in the office. Let's just put it that way, so. Uh, but certainly, uh, certainly about just twenty-three years here and forty-five years overall. And as mentioned, um, went to the livestock association dinner and, and meeting on, um, Monday evening, also at Potrault Ball. Um, uh, forget the gentleman's name, but the same gentleman that gave the presentation on the trip to Africa, the safari and the, the Bruce, um, I forget his name.
Glenn Bronken.
Thank you. Uh, gave the same presentation he gave at the Farm Bureau meeting. Um, with a, with a couple of different variations. He got a little different variation of the presentation, but pictures and stuff were the same and, um, um, there were some different questions and stuff on there. And I'm still kid asked about four questions and, uh, they were really good questions too. Um, some off the beaten path you wouldn't think about, so, um, turned out pretty well there. Um, heard an update from their, um, state lobbyists and some stuff they're working on and, um, uh, won a pie from Fork in the Row, um, bid on the law of live auction, a very berry pie. Don't worry, there's plans, just, just be patient. Got five different berries in it. It's a very healthy pie and I'm, I'm thinking, just, just be patient. Goes to a good cause. It funds scholarships for some of the four-H kids. They raised about twenty-three hundred dollars or something from, uh, Monday night's, um, live auction and they had some asylum auction stuff too, so. But, ah, the pie, can't go wrong with the pie, especially for Valerie Forkin Road, so, um, figured I'd throw a bid on that and.
Thanks for banana brisket breakfast.
Mmm, yummy. Yeah. I had to make a quick trip over to the ATM machine to do that. I wasn't, I wasn't planning on doing that, but aside. Yeah, worked out well. It was a fun, fun evening as usually is steak dinner as always. Um, Greg McClure wasn't there to do the steaks this year, so I don't know who was, so I'll have to figure that one out somewhere along the way. Uh, Tuesday afternoon, I met with Josh Ruro, Executive Director from Manhattan area of Habitat for Humanity, talked about some housing initiative, housing challenges, everything contained within that. They've got some ideas on some things that they would like to try to work on, maybe over in the Ogden area. Um, and just outside of the city there. Um, yes, the RHID program came up in discussion, so did the MIHD programs. Um, they've got some alternative funding opportunities that could fit maybe within those structures as well. Um, just discussion at this particular point in time, so, um, we had a good hour-long conversation on that and several other items too, so. Um, I watched a basketball game. I really probably should have turned it off after the first five minutes. Um, I think it took us eight minutes to score our first point. It was a field, it was a foul shot and it didn't really get much better from there. Um, really not for sure what's going on after the last three games, to be honest with you. Adding insult to injury, the girls also lost to Oklahoma. Um, not so much as worry about there. Um, it probably might be good that they picked up a loss at this point in time. To be honest with you, it's gonna be tougher and tougher to win as you get through the Big Twelve cycle there. I'm not so much worried about them, but tough way for basketball, just in general. Um, and, um, last evening, I had a conversation with a, I guess, a concerned group um, in terms of comprehensive plan and direction that it's going currently, so don't get too much into the weeds on that one, but um, kind of is what it is. Kind of, kind of the same kind of discussion I think was had up in Randolph. Um, that community group, uh, was a week or so ago and just, I don't want to go along with that. Yeah. So, um, also just putting this out there, um, for anybody who may be listening, there is a civic training opportunity this morning through Kansas Farm Bureau. Their Engage Kansas Program, Brendan Worth, their, uh, political affairs director runs that. They're having a candidate's training forum um, Saturday. Um, I think it's from two to four-thirty. You can go online and register. I have a sheet and a QR code if anybody's interested, so you can contact me. Um, if you plan on running for any, uh, local office, state office through this cycle, or currently elected and just want to learn some more information, um, pick up some extra knowledge, let me know and I can certainly shoot you that information. Um, I've seen bits and parts of, um, what they're doing. Um, think it's a good program. Um, I tried to do what I can to actively get people involved civically speaking, so, um, be glad to help on that one if anybody's interested. And that's all I've got this morning, so.
Ready for business?
I am ready for business.
First item I have of many commissioners moved to approve out-of-state travel request with Will Havenger and Jacob Gallion to attend ESRI GIS user conference, San Diego, California.
San Diego.
So this usually goes on in one of the scheduled times, but we got full. And I asked if we could get it to business meeting because, even though it's in July, uh, hotels are filling fast, reservations are changing, so we have a reserve set on, but if we wait until next week, we'll have to re-reserve again, so, um, I asked the city to get it squeezed up in here and just as we go to this, the conference, and it's the only place that has a conferences in San Diego, unfortunately. So, and I say that because of the cost, but, uh, it's an annual event that we do too.
Doesn't legal counsel you to get along?
I think we just have to, we have an executive session and discuss that.
No, no need, no need for that.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel for two GIS staff to the ESRI user conference.
I'll second.
Before we start with it, what does the little i on that stand for?
Oh, really?
Just if you want these signed.
Yeah. Hang on. I've never.
Did this come from your department?
It did. I really don't know. Uh, yeah, but it's, I don't think anybody uses it, but the acronym, no, yeah, I, I wouldn't know.
So stump the IT person, just so you don't have to say.
ESRI, international?
Institute.
Institute.
Can you guess what any of the other letters might stand for?
I wasn't worried about them.
Fire Metal Systems Research Institute. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and they're probably in San Diego. That makes sense. Okay.
That's really telling.
That's all of our, uh, educational knowledge for the day, gentlemen.
Okay.
All right, well, it's been moved and seconded, uh, to recommend the BOCC to approve the out-of-state travel request for two GIS staff members to attend, and I've already forgotten, at the EISR Small i User Conference. All favor.
All right.
All right. Chair, please sign.
Why would they put it in a small i?
Yeah, I don't know.
Some people like to ask questions about.
Yeah.
Institutes, so.
It was all the same or all of them, we wouldn't have this conversation and have learned something.
Well, that's true.
There you go.
Aren't you glad you showed up? Aren't you glad you showed up?
Yeah, bringing that back.
Next, I need a motion for change order number two and the amount of a decrease of one thousand three hundred four twenty-six for a new contract amount total of eight hundred thousand two sixty-three thirty-five and certificate of substantial completion, North County, uh, Riley County EMS station, Anderson Night Architects and Schultz Construction.
Yeah, um, move to approve change order number two and the certificate of substantial completion for the North County handouts.
I'm second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the change order number two and certificate of substantial completion for the North County EMS station. All in favor.
All right.
Aye.
Chair, please sign.
Assume we're still holding the change till everything looks done. Did he come back? Did he get there with the door? He'd said they might have to get back.
Hadn't heard about.
Oh, they're leafing glass, that's right. Couldn't get the door out.
The door was under a shop, but waited for a while.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, I need a motion to approve certi- certification of unpaid fees and/or charges for utility services like side heights. Silver District on property located seven to eight Summit Drive, uh, Summit Ridge Drive, Manhattan, Kansas, four oh one thirty-six is the amount.
In fact, we do this one every year and then.
I don't think this is the one, but we do one every year.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't recognize that name.
The other one is Charah.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion, um, to, um, uh, request a special assessment be placed against Latasha Event Sims for her property for unpaid property or unpaid, uh, utility costs.
I'll second.
It's been moved and, uh, seconded to request a special assessment be placed against Latasha Event Sims, um, for payments on, uh, super bill, um, property, uh, on favor.
All right.
Chair, please sign. Next, I need a motion to accept the bid for one hydraulic dump tail trailer submitted by DNL Trailer, uh, Sales, nineteen thirty-four Northwest Topeka Boulevard, Topeka, Kansas. Total price forty thousand two oh one.
I moved it, excuse me, moved to approve the bid from DNL Trailer Sales for forty thousand two oh one.
I would second that.
It's been moved and approved to accept the bid from DNL Trailer Sales for forty thousand dollar, forty thousand two hundred and one dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I need a motion to accept bid for one, one and a half ton, uh, four-by-four regular cab chassis truck submitted by Rush Truck Center, seven seven zero zero Northeast Thirty-Eight Street, Kansas City, Missouri. Uh, total, uh, amount of one oh one seven thirty-two, removing the option for the hundred and twenty volt, four hundred watt outlet, reducing the bid by four thousand eight seventy-two or a total amount of ninety-six thousand eight sixty.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the bid from Rush Truck Center for ninety-six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and approved to accept the bid from Rush Truck Center for a total bid of ninety-six thousand, uh, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next, I need a motion to accept bids.
Staff's about to age on.
Yeah.
Are we gonna get them all at the same time? Like that too, that'd be good.
Next, I need a motion to accept bid for two stainless steel, uh, dump bodies submitted by American Equipment Company, thirty-two fifty Harvester Road, Kansas City, Kansas. Uh, total amount of a hundred and twenty thousand five oh four for two.
Do you have a question on that one? You know, the prices were close, but that other one, it was a little closer, it was a little, it's only a little bit higher, but hadn't, you know, like half the time for delivery, but you think he would, because he showed a March delivery and the other one was up in a hundred and thirty, a hundred and seventy days. That didn't make much difference.
The two trucks that are going on already have boxes on them, so we're able to use the truck.
Oh, okay.
And then in order to take those chassis down, we'll start tearing them down, take the chassis down and put the new bed on.
Yeah, okay, so it's not like we're gonna be without trucks. Oh, okay. All right, that's the only thing I was thinking, give them. The delivery dates for a lot of stuff has been dragging out.
Okay, well, let's see, I'll make a motion to, um, award the contract to American Equipment Company for a hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and four dollars.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, award the contract to American Equipment Company for a hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and four dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I need a motion for the tax rule corrections.
Do we need to pass this down?
Pass what?
The bid things.
There's nothing on the business.
Oh, there's, okay, okay.
Need a motion on tax rule corrections?
Um, you have to, I moved to approve the tax rule corrections as presented.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the tax rule corrections as presented. All in favor?
All right.
Chair, please sign. Next, I need a motion to sign a letter to the City of Manhattan to request building permit fee waiver for the renovation project, one fifteen North Forest, fourth floor of the Courthouse Plaza East Building.
Now, it says the bid could change, um, could change and that would change the fee, the permit, uh.
Permit fees based on the cost of the project and you have taken it out of the bid, so it's just an.
We haven't, so it's a, okay. So does that mean whatever, if they, if they do this, then they would waive it, okay? Um, let's see. Well, I guess I, I would, uh, make a motion to sign the letter to the City of Manhattan to request a building permit fee waiver for the renovation project at one one five North Forest Street, fourth floor, the Courthouse Plaza East Building.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to sign a letter to the City of Manhattan to request a building fee, um, permit waiver for the renovation project with the fourth floor of the Courthouse Plaza East Building. All in favor?
Aye.
All three, please sign.
I don't know, we get final bid on this.
Their bids are supposed to go to the Mercury, the advertisement, either today or tomorrow, isn't it?
Today is the first month.
Today, yeah.
Bids are February twenty-second.
Next, commissioners, I have Riley County Employee Action Form, Sidney Woolgas, new hire as need museum assistant, museum department, Jane Richards. Uh, new hire information technology specialist, IT GIS, Kerry, uh, Colzal, uh, new hire EMT EMS ambulance, uh, name I'm not even gonna try to pronounce, commissioners, a new hire as need election worker, and Cody Smith, EMT EMS director. All three, please sign.
Gotta have to at least try, because it's in your office.
Uh, I, uh, I'll let Annalise handle that one.
Are you, are you listening to this? It's a beach for our people. I think we should.
Not an aviation training, we need it back. They'll train me eventually.
I don't have a cold or anything, I'm just allergic.
That's what everyone always says starting out.
No, no, I don't have anything. I've been being very careful.
COVID started out as allergies. That's really what I thought I had the first time I got it. And I, nah, it just kind of feels like.
Well, I think it's on this paper.
There is a lot of testing paper, as there is.
Probably not knowing, basically.
There you go, could be.
Could be. I want you to be there, I make the one. If you want to go ahead and work through everything else while I sign here.
You bet. Any changes in the minutes, commissioners?
Anything?
In motion?
Oh, just trying to. Go, go ahead.
I like motion approved minutes from, uh, January twenty-ninth meeting.
I would second that.
They seconded to approve the minutes from the January twenty-ninth meeting of the Riley County Commission on the Spirit. All in favor?
Aye.
Any agendas look okay, commissioners?
Good.
Any items for next week's press conference? Okay, yeah, Elizabeth Moore, I'm in a few seconds.
I think so. It's modifications in here, need to get removed.
Yeah, I know. Clapper. On a clapper. Alexa, turn off lights. Alexa, turn on lights.
That's possible.
Okay.
Except we can do it.
Morning commissioners, Elizabeth Moore, the resources director with our monthly updates. Um, some of the same information we presented on EK, but here's our recruitment and retention numbers, um, for the current month, so that would be the end of January. um, for the current month, so that would be the end of January. So current headcount, two eighty-eight in our regular employees, three thirty in our seasonal or stipend entrance. Um, so for January and the year, we've had eight hires and three separations in our regular, um, staffing, and we have also surprisingly had eight, but also zero, um, separations in our, uh, seasonal stipend place. Our turnover rate has increased a little bit, I think you remember last month we were at fourteen point one and we're holding kind of there. Uh, so our turnover rate has gone up a little bit, um, and remember that's full up for a full year, so we do a look back, it is a twelve-month rolling, so that's why it's not, it's not this month, that's the annual turnover rate. Um, and you won't necessarily see that change just because of this current month, so I mean, it would just be an average for that part. Um, the average ten, tenure though, is still sitting around nine, we were at nine point one previously, so hasn't changed drastically. Uh, we do have openings right now, we have six openings, we've got the attorney, the elections, uh, fire, public works, and two in the treasurer's office, I think you guys are tracking all of those. Um, a little bit, a bit update here, we, uh, have a few more employees eligible to retire now as of this month than we had in the past, and then a few more, of course, then within five years. Uh, percentage wise, though, it hasn't really changed because in the whole, you know, I think it was, uh, eight or nine more, so. Uh, all right, so some of our upcoming developments, um, in, in, upcoming and recently per, um, completed. Clancy and I did a supervisor and harassment training on January ninth, um, with all of the leadership of R C F D, and I think it was really well received, you know, harassment and supervisor training is not the most exciting, um, news and training that they probably have, but they were, they were interested, they had good questions. Um, you know, we really focused on here's, here's the parameters, but here we are as your resources, when and if you have questions. Um, we also then, we've talked, been telling you about the quarterly CPR training, and it's highlighted because I didn't get a date from, uh, EMS until yesterday afternoon, so I wasn't here for published date, but we will have the first CPR, hands-only CPR on the twenty-third, it's gonna be Friday. And Josh's theme is gonna be final Fridays, um, so it'll be the final Friday of every second month, so every two months, because when we'll have that, we'll have ten slots per training available, so he's gonna, he's working on a whole flyer, and you'll see that come out in the next week or so. Um, we are staying looking on that comprehensive onboarding, I mean, this is gonna be a multi-month project, so, uh, Michelle has started gathering those separate people together and, um, trying to set up something that will give everybody, you know, better kickoff to their employment in Riley County. And then we did do tackling toxicity and promoting positivity, and that was with Mike Hanky, who is a, uh, professional trainer. He's out of Grand Island, Nebraska, I think he's in Nebraska, but I think Grand Island, um, we originally had it scheduled for then, I think the ninth of January, but because of the snow, um, it, we, it was canceled, and so we did have that on the thirtieth, we ended up with twenty-five employees from eight departments, and that was also really, uh, really well received, we had, uh, five of the supervisors from public works there, uh, most of noxious weed leadership there, we had, um, people from the health department just abandoned, and obviously of different departments, and I'm really glad, I went as well, and it really opened up conversations, um, and you're shaking your.
I was asked about that this morning, I went to get my tea, because somebody said that they saw a bunch of them there.
Yeah, yeah, at the library, yeah, we spent three hours at the library. It was really, it was great, and they feel like they're going to continue doing their annual training, and generally, uh, they have enough slots for forty, fifty people and can't fill them, so, um, this was, this cost us forty-five dollars per person, so pretty good rate, um, and, and really a positive training, really sparked a lot of good conversation. Um, I guess I'll say one other thing, one of the things he did, I think that really our supervisors enjoyed, he took challenges from the group, so everybody together kind of made these challenges like, what do you do when, and I have an employee who, and, you know, without names or anything, and then he gave us ways to handle that with holding people very accountable, positive infer. Um, so he really focused on not saying, hey, you have a bad attitude or a bad personality, that's okay, no, because the performance and the behavior is not acceptable, uh, so it was a lot of really great information. Um, so we are, uh, working on a focus script to evaluate some training that relates back to our succession planning, uh, some of the same programs you've seen before, uh, we've got the high-performance team building in one of our departments, and then, um, kind of some updates on the employee day, the committee has, um, moved forward in several aspects, so the location is approved as far as insurance goes, we were a little bit concerned as whether or not insurance would, um, be an issue for that location, so as long as, um, everything else comes together, that will probably be the location we propose to the commissioners again. And then the possible topics, they're looking at personality management at work, so how, again, how do we manage those personalities that are different than ours and get the best out of them, um, inclusion, and then building a high-performance team, and they've got a, they've got a potential keynote speaker that if, um, Danny's our P O C on that, and if that person comes through, every, everyone will be very excited, it's a, it's a local celebrity, so we'll see if it comes together. She set, she set the bar high.
We had a, and I think Greg had said something to me on personality management, we had a guy at the Chamber Leadership, uh, retreat, that was probably the best that we had seen, that'd be a good name, I mean, it was, a lot of them are just so similar, but this guy kind of had a different spin on it.
Okay.
Present. And he was from Nebraska.
Oh, wow, how can you go wrong?
But it was, because they're all kind of the same, you know, but this guy was different, Greg, I remember Greg commented to me, and so that's why I looked at him and thought.
Yeah, I can't remember if you guys know English.
Well, I could contact my colleagues in the January, yeah, um, so that's would be great, we talked about DISC, we've talked about, um, Strengths Finder, we've talked about, uh, color code, but we haven't nailed anything down or a trainer, so that would be, that'll, I'll find out and bring that to the committee, thanks. All right, so my, my personal professional exciting news is I did get the draft out to the department heads yesterday, and when I say I did, I just mean I sent the email. Um, there was a work group, uh, it was David, as he's reported every month, Rich, and Clancy and I, um, and really, we were working on a draft that we contracted from an employment lawyer, uh, who's spoken focuses on personnel manual, so that went to our department heads yesterday for the first review, and I've asked them to get it back to us by the sixteenth, um, with their edits, and you all got a copy of that as well. Um, I imagine, though, that there'll be several suggestions and edits and ideas, you know, trying, some of them, um, some of them are not, they're just changes that have to be made because of updated laws, but the majority are Riley County, so we can make sure they work for every, every, uh, department, we, uh, Michelle's working on the work and compensation audit, we, uh, completed risk management audit with our rep for travelers, and, um, we still are looking at this F L S A regulation, but there hasn't been any updates, we discussed that last month. And then I will be going to the legal, uh, update seminar, Sherman event here in state, um, and I'll just one second, my first one second. We have had some updates related to budget, but related to personnel, so we, and we'll talk, we'll be coming to talk to you about the community correction, corrections, changes, but we've had some staffing transition challenges there that are going to affect the budget, so we're going to, uh, we've got some solutions proposed that, um, Shelley, Brit, uh, Brittany, Rich and I are working through, we'll bring you that information, um, we are planning and advertising, planning for advertising for the county council transition, um, and actually, I don't have it in there because it's not an apartment head, but we are advertising for the, uh, fire, assistant fire chief position as well, and Vivian put some really good advertising for that, we have quite a few candidates for that position. And then we.
Clancy can leave.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, I had the same conversation yesterday, actually. Just yesterday, I tried to convince both Michelle and Clancy that he couldn't leave, that either one was on my, my team. Um, and then the county attorney, I'm working with them to help fill the assistant county attorney position, they have, um, some really great candidates as well, some, some rock star candidates that we're excited to potentially bring on board, so. Um, some demographic information, really just for your reference, here's, uh, interestingly, this is an H R thing, we try to look at gender and race and ethnicity and different things, and so it's not necessarily telling you good, bad, or ugly, but just something to look at over time and see what our, um, our workforce is made up of, so blue is male, and the yellow is female, this is our total head count, just for our regular, um, numbers, these are hired, these are termed, it's over a year. Uh, and then this is some more employee demographics, it's kind of small, isn't it? And just for you, Greg, you know how you can't read these little blue numbers down here? Um, I did look that up, so Q one of twenty-three, that blue number is six. Q two of twenty-three is twenty-five, would you think that one's on there, yeah. Q three is eighteen, Q four is fourteen, and then the Q one of this year is thirteen, so just kind of, this is our tenure of employees, so how long they've been with our organization, uh, how many people are in each group, um, obviously, the majority there, and that's what we hope to see, you're gonna be in that ten-plus years, we know that we have some employees with forty-plus.
Yeah, you're gonna say you know, ten to twenty, a twenty to thirty, and a thirty plus.
For us, yeah, for us, we do, but most organizations are pretty happy to get a lot of employees in that five to ten.
Well, that's, and, and I know we've had to talk about turnover, but it is, it kind of reinforces, when I've always thought that once, if you get your five years, you're gonna stay, you know, it's one.
Yeah.
Last term, and if you look at it, the, the ten years plus is, you know, has stayed the same, and the five to ten has grown, so it, you know.
Right, positive direction.
The people that are staying, stay, but.
And you're right, it goes a lot for the sake of communities, right, so usually, they say with communities, if you can get someone to stay in your community for at minimum three years, then they're gonna be a long-term resident, and it's really the same here, we can get them to stay for three years, then they feel like they are part of, this is their regular life, and this is their part of what they do.
Go ahead.
Do you know how this compares to other local organizations? I think that'd be interesting to find out.
I don't, but I can ask.
I think it'd be interesting information.
Yeah, I mean, with the counties, I'm sure that they would share if they, if they have the data, right, a lot of counties don't have H R systems, um.
I'm thinking like companies, like companies that have been around a while, Otz Florence comes to mind, even private companies too, you know.
Yeah.
Uh.
Well, that might be true. I, if you're comparing it to us, I guarantee our numbers are a, a lot better. Um, with probably the onslaught of, our focus is probably more military spouse. So you're really probably staying in that probably three to five-year range is where ours.
Oh, I thought you meant yours at Florence would be longer, and I thought.
No, 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 that's gonna be probably more, you're gonna probably see that more three to five-year range with that, that median's gonna be larger, or that orange is gonna be more your red, if you're looking at the color.
That's, that fits the demographic of that industry as well, right, it's a whole different industry and a whole different kind of demographic of.
I think I'd be more interested to be comparable to maybe what A K State's doing, or, uh, uh, maybe V I Christie, that, that sort of one where it's a little bit more specialized in those fields, and they're gonna be there a little bit longer, and then in the community a little bit longer.
Well, we do have our local H R organization, um, Herman, and I, I just met with them this morning, so I, I'd be more than happy to ask and see if they'll share. Um, okay, we kind of talked about January, uh, W twos have gone out, and, um, what was it, ninety percent of our employees, uh, are getting them electronically, so we did have, uh, ten percent go in and choose to have a hard copy mailed to them. Uh, those went in the mail yesterday. And if for some reason anyone knows we know how to print their W two, let us know, we'll help you do that. Policy updates we talked about, um, we did some realigning with departments and supervisors, which you're aware of, and I think that is going very well, particularly in the health department, um, we have worked on some holiday pay, which we'll be bringing to you with the manual. Uh, we have also worked on, well, actually, let me rephrase that, these two, holiday pay and emergency pay were focuses for January because we had an overlap of emergency call-out and holidays, and so we needed to figure out how we pay holiday pay, work holiday pay, emergency call-out pay, overtime, those were all overlapping on each other, and we have policies for it, but we don't hit that that often, so we worked through that story. Yeah, yours actually weren't probably the, um, you guys are the most used to dealing with some of that overlapping, so, um, and then our annual audits. And then February, we are starting to work with United Way, um, Tara and I talked yesterday, so trying to get some things set up, I'm a little behind the curve on that to get some of the going in February, so it'll probably be towards the end of the month, or March first. Uh, Title Six is policy process is my next large process, uh, policy process, and then we'll review that. Uh, but this is still the same as last month, so that is impressive, any questions or anything I was missing, or you'd like to see differently?
I probably need to get, let's see, and get a hard copy of W two.
Okay, yeah, too easy.
Yeah, me too, because it doesn't, mine, mine did not print out, though.
Oh, yeah, just stop by my desk and I'll have it for you.
It was like one of.
I have my brother's opportunity to look at it, because my account wants a hard copy, and I'm not one to argue on that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
I'll get mine in the mail, don't you know.
Yours actually.
You did go in the mail yesterday, I was really surprised that Barry Wilkinson went into Payloffy and particularly clicked a hard copy.
You did.
Just made your luggage there.
That was great.
Commissioners, you ready for Judge Bannister?
Yep.
Come on, Judge.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Judge Ford.
Morning. Thank you for making a few minutes for me, but again, uh, I know Mr. Wilkinson was in front of you a couple of weeks ago to share his, uh, thoughts and comments about the courthouse facility. Um, this will necessarily be breaking news, because he got the speed, but I do wanna corroborate probably what he shared, and may, maybe add a little bit to it from my perspective. Very maybe in there every day, or close to it, I am in there every day, but, uh, see parts that he doesn't. Um, and how it affects us as well as, um, limitations of space, dimensions, and configurations with, we're cast with. Uh, so the courthouse was built nineteen oh five, completed nineteen oh six, um, forty-five years after statehood, right? Um, probably many of its users at that time pre-existed in Kansas becoming a state, um, but we're, um, hundred eighteen years later now, um, courthouse is still serving us well. Um, but it does have its limitations and restrictions that, um, we have to be mindful of to navigate around those, uh, make sure they don't affect the administration of justice. And I, I don't wanna be an alarmist, it's not an emergency, um, the wills of justice will continue to turn in a fair and just manner, but, um, if we don't give the forethought to certain dynamics, circumstances that the facility limits us to, um, it can't put those in jeopardy, um, wasn't that long ago that I had a motion filed, um, to set aside a verdict based upon, um, allegations of jury being tampered with. Um, more in an inadvertent way, but juries being get to the courtroom, matter they do, they're usually staged or queued up in the hallway, and while they're in the hallway, there's attorneys and witnesses being talked to, family members, um, other details, I don't necessarily need to get in for today's purposes, but that's just one prime example that, um, we can't really renovate around under its current footprint. There are other aspects that, um, again, you plan around, and so it's not becoming an issue, but one is simply the security. Not in the most routine aspects of, um, entering and exiting, uh, routine manners, courthouse facilities, fine in those aspects, but again, plenty of scenarios we see, maybe not on a daily basis, but a weekly basis, where you have defendants' families, victims' families on close proximity, um, narrowly spaced confinement, and, um, security, uh, does a good job, but, um, they've got five different courtrooms they're managing, and, uh, far less employees than that can be everywhere they need, between, um, P F A docket, um, highly contested domestic custody matter, criminal matter, and other division, and so, again, uh, we plan, we deal with those scenarios, but, um, when you're contractual candid or otherwise, um, thoughtfully develop, thoughtfully, um, design a modern courthouse, uh, that's hundred and eighteen years old. Um, we'll make a significant difference now in how we go about our business. It's, yeah. And again, I appreciate everything that you do, and, um, it's held up well for hundred and eighteen years, but there's things that still can't be figured out, Judge Bosch's bench, whenever it rains, it's still gonna have water coming down the wall behind him, keep his buckets in there permanently, um, oftentimes with significant rain, basement's gonna have blood in certain areas, and, uh, a court administrator, Kathy, could give you a fairly specific list. Those don't stop us from going about our business, but again, they're not good for upkeep, and they contribute to the deterioration of the building at some point, rather than maintaining it. they contribute to the deterioration of the building at some point, rather than maintaining it. It, it will hit a cliff, uh, sooner or later, uh, at least in its current use. Maybe just one other area that, uh, may not be as readily as apparent, but we've got a magistrate courtroom on the basement floor, magistrate courtroom on the main floor. Um, those are smaller courtrooms, not being enough to have any type of jury in there. But, uh, they do have a high volume of litigants going in and out, as well as attorneys. Uh, there's no design or space available for conference rooms. Um, attorneys, their clients are trying to huddle in the corner of the hallway, which is already pretty short. You've got a probation office across from there, people going in and out, you've got opposing counsel. Um, again, you have maybe the public in and out. And it's not suitable to that, and so in turn, the necessary con- conversations to maybe resolve a matter, don't get concluded, and continuous result, rescheduling. And so in that respect, the wills of justice may not turn as fast as they would if we had a well-designed building. I'll hedge my marks a little bit. Again, it's not a matter of keeping up with the Joneses, right? It's a matter of having a very old day in building, but I would cite just within our close proximity, by Lomond County, um, having what I would still consider a very new courthouse. Dickinson, not a completely new courthouse, but a significant investment, um, in all respects, not just in judiciary, but their courthouse facility. Um, estimating more of pure counties, Lions County, Ellis County, Leavenworth, um, first two not being new buildings, Leavenworth having a new building. Um, Douglas County, um, is in the process. It's more a matter of where they're gonna build, whether it's gonna be next door, on the current side, or moving to completely new location west of there. Um, and Johnson County, helping their, um, new courthouse a couple of years ago. The only reason I cite those is again, because they were dealt with the same type of issues we are. Um, it's not, they got a new courthouse, we need a new courthouse, it's really the same type of problems. They recognized it just as a citizens' community of nineteen oh five, um, valued what the courthouse stood for. It's significant support to the community. Um, that hasn't changed. Maybe changed in some respects, but it hasn't changed in how the citizens and US Commission, um, value a justice system and, uh, that's reflected upon, uh, investments in that building ultimately, right? So as you consider the larger needs of the county as it relates to any other facilities, absolutely keep the courthouse in mind and where that fits and, um, continue to include us in the conversation, please. Um, I say it's not an emergency, but, um, I would expect that when it gets serious, you know, you're still looking maybe at, maybe even a half decade before something's done. And so that requires lawyer process to start sooner rather than later in, um, even if not an emergency, there's certain opportunities in time where the confluence of factors make it the right time. Whether that's, um, again, other building projects that the county's looking at, whether that's interest rates leveling off, and then a bond issue at a better rate than you can now, or whole other host factors, we don't want to go down this morning, but you wanna be prepared and ready to move, um, when that confluence of time comes, and be my thought process. But I don't know, I may be the only person in this room that's still here at that time, I hope not, but, um, I appreciate you willing us to entertain our remarks and, um, hopefully move with some intention on, uh, considering, um, what options are out there, thoughts and outfits in the overall county's plan to lay in the facilities. Don't know if anybody have any questions, but happy to comment further if some of our remarks need further, um, expansion. Questions? Alright, well, as always, I appreciate everything you do and, uh, let us know about our business, but, um, don't fail to reach out, whether it's on this or any other item, um, if you hear something that, um, you wonder what that's about, or be happy to give you an explanation that makes sense, I'm sure.
Okay, alright.
Thanks Judge. Thanks Barry. Next commission, Anna Burson at nine thirty.
Okay.
Got a few minutes, five minutes. Do what? Radators are not working again. Commissioner wanted me to point that out. Just can we get a little electricity plugged in underneath here?
You, you do have some valve issues, I think.
He's not even getting to the base of these pipes.
The, the two that you just, you had the fun, oh, no, 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 those were. No, these ones. Yeah, and, and, and still.
I'm beyond no football this weekend.
I know, it's the first weekend, you know, since late August, no football, and I, I don't, it's a weird feeling. It's like, a part of me just like disappears and I don't know what to do. Have to like, find something to fill the void.
Yep.
Think I may have to stop by Rally House or something and grab a Chiefs shirt and a hat.
There you go.
Me to DC for Superman Ball, I mean.
Oh, that's true, you're gonna be there, huh?
Hmm. They're doing the same thing they did last year at the, the International Mall Run there.
Represent well.
Three ninety-inch screen TVs and twelve different stations, a nacho station and a
I remember.
Sandwich, yeah, so caught me by surprise last year, but.
Not this year.
And I'm not a, not a forty-niners fan, so, you know, yeah. I'm thinking about it. And maybe donate the hat and the shirt to charity or something afterwards.
This door is cold over here.
Doors and windows both leak or a blank.
Well, I didn't, it was so warm in here Tuesday, I didn't dress for it.
Wait, wait, you said it was warm in?
It was warm in here on Tuesday, it was blasting away, yeah.
Well, actually, I left on Monday and it said it was seventy-nine in here.
Yeah, it was, it was not quite that hot, but it was warm, cuz I didn't, you know, I was in my office for a while and it just it was, it was warm, it was warm. I don't know why it goes up and down.
He said they're having some issues with some valves down below, getting it released to come out. Ready Commissioners?
I am.
Morning Commissioners. I am ready.
Okay, go right ahead.
There's Anna Burson, Ryan Guy Frazier. I'm just here with a monthly update. Um, so I'm just gonna touch on the personal property again as a reminder, those redditions went out. They need to be signed and returned to avoid those penalties or, um, late fees. The envelope was included, and it's just important to sign that form update with any changes or return it for the deadline. So those are being processed as they come in, and property values are being updated for twenty twenty-four. On the Ag side, the review of our canopy cover is being wrapped up this week. Um, again, Ag use maps will be mailed to property owners in May of this year, so any, any property owner that has agricultural land will get a map and be able to. On the residential side, final review is actually now at about ninety to ninety-five percent complete, completely done, and will be completed this week. Um, with some final wrap-up and cleanup next week. Um, the team's currently finalizing any outstanding building permits and they are wrapping up the pups. Um, twenty twenty-three ended with one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven total sales, um, one thousand and seventy-eight for residential properties. And our median ratio was approximately ninety-five percent, with that median sell price of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred. Um, there was a total of approximately four hundred and eighty-four building permits, sixty of those were new dwellings. For twenty twenty-four, we currently have sixteen sales reported to date. And of those thirteen include residential properties. Uh, we have two thousand nine hundred and twenty-two parcels that will be due this year for their annual review and hope to begin that process here in the near future. Uh, the residential trend for twenty twenty-four is reflecting an approximately four to ten percent valuation increase. And so this figure represents the typical residential valuation increase for twenty twenty-four. So some property values will change at different rates depending on those individual market areas. The residential vacant land trend is approximately at one to eleven percent, depending again on the market area. For commercial, um, I did attach the voted case spreadsheet. Uh, we have several hearings that have been scheduled to Pika. Uh, specifically when I first put this together, uh, Sunflower Bank, Genesis, Icon Investments. Um, the hearing for Parkwood and in Suites was held in Pika on January sixteenth. Um, I do believe, um, it went fairly well, uh, hopeful that we'll have a voted decision soon. Um, we did receive the transcripts from the Home Depot hearing, and our attorney is working on filing those briefs. They are due, um, to BOTA by March first, so hopefully we'll have a decision, um, here soon, um. They are wrapping up our commercial valuation, and we'll, um, be completed with that next week. Before I get to this next part, I'll just quickly get to the spreadsheet and show you a couple of things. So everything in orange is new from the last update, so that's everything that's scheduled. As you can see, we have a lot scheduled this year. Yes, they've really stacked this up in Topeka, half days. I mean, this is more scheduled this year than has been in prior years, so we're gonna cross our fingers, um.
Have them scheduled.
Yeah, but some of these we've been waiting for years to get scheduled, so, you know, I'm thankful to see at least that part. Um, one new piece on here is from your by Marriott, um, we actually are in pain of stipulation on that. IV, I let you guys know in that last, um, update, the IV, um, we had stipulated, just waiting for the voted decision to finalize that. Um, did just get some new information yesterday, we may be stipulating two years on Genesis. I'm not the third year, but, um, as those come, if you have any questions, please reach out to me and I can, uh, get you some more details on that. So let me get back up here. So the commercial valuation trend for twenty twenty-four is approximately one to five percent, depending on the property type, um, in those individual market areas. Again, this figure represents a typical commercial valuation increase. Some commercial property values may change at different rates depending on the market area and property type. The commercial vacant land trend is approximately zero to, uh, two percent, so less than one. Um, it's kind of hard to, to put that in there, but less than one percent, um, to about two percent. Some additional information, I did attend the KCA legislative reception held at Pika on January twenty-third, um, for the members of the delegation. Just, you know, sharing with them, being available to them to answer any questions, address any concerns, um. On the legislative side of things, I, I am staying up to date on, um, proposed bills, uh, responding to any members of the delegation that have questions on properties specific to Riley County and the impact it might have. Um, so I'm responding to any of those that come through. Uh, again, just monitoring those acti- activities. Um, I did attend that intergovernmental luncheon. Don't need to really get into that too much. Uh, we have interviews scheduled for, um, our open position to begin in February, February twelfth. And hope to have those positions filled soon. And then lastly, but certainly not least, twenty twenty-four valuation notices. Um, notices will be going out, uh, this, that last, uh, last week in February, that's, that's the goal. Uh, with those notices being mailed towards the end of the month, I want to make sure I update everyone on a couple of changes to the request process. This is specifically to ensure appeals don't get missed and appeals are requested by property owners. Um, the appeal request form that will be included in those valuation notices must be signed, completed and returned to the office. Uh, we've set up an email specifically for those email forms to be emailed to us, they can be mailed back to us, they can be dropped off in our office. Um, at any point within that thirty days, so they have thirty days from the date on that valuation notice. We will contact the property owners for scheduling. The phone line is still set up specifically for questions or information requests. Um, again, they will not be able to just call in to set up an appeal if we have not received that official request form. Um, with the appeal volume last year, it's important just to ensure every appeal, um, everyone that's asking for an appeal gets the appeal. Um, and as well, just to have the appropriate documentation for the property owner requesting those appeals. Do you have any questions? I am on schedule on the press conference for Monday to do a press release. The trend publication, um, in the paper is tomorrow. Um, so the legal were, were required to legally publish, and that's going in the paper tomorrow under the legal section. Vivian's getting it up on the website, I believe either today or tomorrow, and, um, I'll have that press conference on Monday to update the public with what they're gonna see with the values this year. It does appear the rural is probably gonna see some of those on the higher end, that ten percent, seven to ten percent more typical of the world.
Man.
Yeah, sorry. Um, the market.
Keep working.
Payroll deduction.
Are there any questions for me about any of that, um, sorry, any thoughts?
Good.
Alright, well, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thanks Anna. Next commission, Brittany Phillips at nine forty-five.
Thank you.
Much time you want, you know?
Uh, imagine the entire, well, let's see.
What was that?
Very good, so I started.
I gotta believe. I think we've been taking about twenty minutes.
You were supposed to twenty-two hours.
Two hours, twenty minutes.
No. That was your opportunity.
Not two hours?
I'm gonna be signing an executive order. I will be at Tommy McMooson, I know you'll agree with me.
Sounds like you'll be trying.
Executive sessions on these items will be no more than one hour.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Michelle.
Appreciate it.
Here, I, I, well, I've listed it out before, I'll see.
Okay, if you need, just let me know.
Okay. I would do it electronically, but like I said, my accountant wants some harder to be honest. As one person, I choose not to argue.
Thanks.
Do you want me to print it out?
Doctors, lawyers, you know, those people argue with.
I printed mine out, it was in two sections, it was this part, it was like this big, and the other part was like the letters were not big, and all this doesn't work.
Yeah, I'll start giving all that stuff in the mail.
Yeah.
Let's see then.
I have to wait on some till. I have to wait on some till March. I'm trying to make fun, not winter March. Okay, well.
Big notices, it should sound like a notice in the paper. See, that meant for us this week. That a couple of counties that switch.
Yeah.
Website.
Don't say that.
Valid. Rants on all sides. Save some money.
Well, I had a look at the paper. That's happened. It's most of it.
That's John, one of the last bid openings to Basta, so we did.
Some four hundred and seventy something. A lot of hundred bucks to advertise for the.
We're going to shorten those.
Well, can you put it in? Is it for more information?
Yeah. So you're gonna get that done at the surgical center?
Who's doing your surgery?
Doctor Chase.
Oh.
Doctor who?
Chase.
Good chance you'll see one of my two daughters.
She's good.
Well, you'll see one, the other one you will see. She's in the operating room. She goes, I like my patients. They come in, out, they leave. Don't go to your family.
Well, my first question to the doctor was always, did you get a good night's sleep? How are your hands today? I've known Chase for a long time.
My two daughters at work there, they're not the twins, but my youngest daughter looks like one of the twins even more so than the twin does. It's uh, there's some of the, there's some of the doctors. There, there was one doctor, uh Madison was uh. Gone, of course, on maternity, uh came back and. Thought he saw, he knew Madison was in the operating room, but he saw her another and he says, what are you doing? Picking up extra work? And he goes, it was Morgan. Even the doctors get confused.
So that one works in the operating room and the other one is the other one doing crap.
Yeah, something like that.
What's your name?
Uh, Morgan is the youngest, is what's the one you might see in the operating room, this Mattson. That's the one who just had my grandchild.
She looks like you?
Oh, everyone says it a million times. I get it a million times. You're a heart.
Youngest one got your personality, isn't that, is that what she's saying?
Uh, the one in the operating room probably has mine. The youngest one has mom. She's the talk, 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 talk. The harder headed one is in the operating room.
Okay, that's, that's, okay. Okay, ready, you ready?
Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Budget Officer. Today, I am here to discuss some great opportunities that Wood O'Briens discussed with us on Tuesday morning. So, uh, one of them is for smaller communities and Rich realized that Commissioner McKinley was working with um community. And so he. Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, I will also be distributing the smaller communities one out to them as well. Uh, that one is open year round. It's through USDA rural development. Um, I could not find amounts out there. Uh, or you know how much they could even ask for, but it is a good opportunity.
I bet you that's because there's no money there right now because nothing to USC is being funded.
They're not ready to do it right now.
Yeah.
Looking for stuff to get on that.
Yeah, it's a really good opportunity for the smaller communities. The other grant opportunity that we were discussing was the Assistance to Firefighters Grant through Department of Homeland Security. And they have a total of three hundred and twenty-four million dollars out there and the max award amount is nine million dollars that you could. You know, get funded for. We did talk to Russell and he said that in the past that they have applied for this grant and were unsuccessful. And we have decided that um it would probably be best to actually try again with the help of Wood O'Briens. If the Commissioners so choose for us to apply for the grant. Uh, we also believe that this funding could help um for the renovations of the EMS ambulance facility. For the Emergency Management and Fire District One. Uh, I believe somebody also mentioned even rural fire stations that maybe we could use the money for.
That's what I was wondering. The new station.
Not for, I don't think for the new station.
But it can do equipment to the new stations would qualify and I think the renovations, you know, modifications maybe to the renovation for the. Rural Fire Emergency Management and so. You know, they've tried before and so maybe with just the help of Wood O'Briens and you know, they know how to deal with this stuff and. My, you know, uh, Russell, you know, said, well, we've tried and haven't got it, but may as well keep on trying. I think maybe if they see we have multiple needs and a little bigger need, maybe they'll get us a little something to help out. And if we got it for the renovation, then at least that frees up money for some other facility needs we may have, Commissioners.
Infrastructureal means, because that's probably gonna be, that's what we earmarked that. Those terms are other facility needs, the dollars are gonna be left over through. Those emergency funds aren't gonna be nearly enough to cover even a small part of it.
Yeah, but it's better than nothing.
Everything else, so. That uh, we have a uh number of renovations.
We'll work on the final one.
Good, because we'll have, so probably asked, probably asked.
Well, they don't have. The number stepped from living there always to be modeled. You can't put it out for bid and tell me.
Well, I'm speaking, it was estimated at one time. Because you can probably add about ten percent contingency.
Well, I don't know.
Couple of questions. You're talking about a cost share at ten percent. So would we have a specific number in mind? And then would we have? Um, the cost share of whatever that ten percent is, would we know where that would be coming from in advance?
Uh, that is definitely something we can work through. Uh, we would have to work with Russell on that and where he would want that to come out of his budget. I am that.
Because remember, that comes out of the fire district at that point in time, not any part of our budget.
Correct, that's correct. Yeah, and so the ten percent is ten percent of what we get approved. Um, and it is specifically saying there that any kind is not.
Right.
Is that also for the community facilities, uh, one, two, the ten percent? Okay, they don't have to come up with ten percent, no.
Well, no, there are. It's only a percentage. Depending on the size of the community, it's different percentages.
But whatever percent it is, it's better than a hundred percent.
And in this case, it would only be Ogden or Leonardville because those are the only two that have facilities, correct?
No, for the small communities?
No, the small communities plan isn't a fire, it's separate.
Community centers, community buildings and Commissioner McKinley had said that the city of Riley was, and I went, oh, and. The good thing about Jen, you know, she knows we're working on, you know. Keats and University Park knows and she said she's always gonna look for not just things that apply to Riley County, but things that may in our community and other areas.
So define, okay. Oh, that changes it a lot. Oh, there's two different. So on the community facilities, then define what facilities are specifically.
So they.
What they say.
They have in here. Uh, that it can be healthcare facilities like hospitals, medical clinics, dental clinics, nursing homes. Public facilities such as county halls or courthouses or street improvements. Um, community support services like a childcare center, community center, fairground, transitional housing. Or fire departments, police stations, prisons, police vehicles, fire trucks, public works, museums, libraries.
And even.
Street improvements.
Yes.
Even a thing I had thought about.
That, that idea over to Ogden for street improvements, for sure.
Oh, she talked about the grant that Ogden's probably working on for their main and I told her about your involvement specifically and working on that. But I also thought, you know, the city Randolph for a small community is pretty progressive and I could see them someday wanting a city office similar to. That's a great job you guys did in the city of Riley, you know, and so. That's why we're gonna uh totally get this on the agenda and we're gonna get it to all the small communities to make them learn.
Yeah, okay.
Now, of course, if they're gonna do it, I'm sure we'll be involved in assisting the small cities because most of them don't have the staff to do that. So we'll have Wood O'Briens.
That's the number one thing I hear from Ogden when they try to do any of this type of federal. Grant funds is the, the problem. This is what I'll discuss with federal staff when I'm in DC over that week is. It's just, it's such a. Uh, you know that Julie even knows that dealing with, with, with grant funds, it's such a tough process and there's so much red tape and there's so many. Nooks and crannies to work through and it's, it's not just that, it's just knowing what you actually need to do, what you actually need to come up with to do that then. That's the secondary part of it is the time that it takes and the effort it takes secondarily. And none of these communities are, are set up to do that and nor will they ever be. So that's the real challenge to get through that federally. It'd be nice to have either a go-to person regionally or through the state that they could function with and plug into. That could help them fill in those gaps or help us fill in those gaps to, to get to that point, but it's just, it's just not a resource that's there. So.
Jennifer mentioned that she's been working with Ogden quite a bit, beyond their grants. So I, and I think. Like just in our experience with her and she's only, she's only been on with Wood O'Briens with us for a couple of months. You know, she has been a huge resource and she, I mean, is very quick to respond to emails and will set aside anything, uh, sound, uh, set aside time. It's like meet with us.
I think I was on a Zoom call with her and something that they were working on about three months ago, so. Yeah, that's.
So we don't know if we don't try. I mean, there's money out there, so it's an opportunity.
I'm always, I'm always uh willing to turn over whatever stones it takes and I know. Um, just being at the uh award ceremony a couple of weeks ago, we know we still have um vehicle. Oh, yeah, forestry and um the other services that we get some of those vehicles for completely drying up. So the avenues to get those aren't, aren't there, which means. Well, we're gonna be very limited to either having to work with um. Actual wire vehicle servicing companies to get those or we're gonna be getting trucks from. Actual dealerships and tailoring them to whatever our strategic needs are for rural fire. Um, those are kind of gonna be the options that we're left with and those are far more expensive options. So you're gonna have to figure out ways to fill in the gaps. That's just a fact. So, yeah, anything that helps.
Um, I did put a motion on here to approve us to move forward with preparing an application for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
Is there a timeline on that?
It is due March eighth.
Okay.
So we would, of course, bring a back for final approval.
Okay.
So is it just for the firefighters grant we need a motion for or for the?
Just for the firefighter's grant, because we can't, we don't do anything.
Twenty thousand of those.
Though, what will happen and this is probably flancy and chilly. I can't imagine any one of those communities would want to support some of those. Some of the other ones when it comes up, just to give you a heads up.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, I'd make a motion to approve uh the staff move forward with preparation of. Uh, an application for the Assistance to the Firefighters Grant.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move forward with the preparation of an application for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, time for Julie Gibbs.
Yes, I'd move to recess with Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Health and Paper.
On second half?
It's been moved and seconded to recess as the Board of County Commissioners and we'll reconvene as the Board of County Health. So in favor?
Good morning. Julie Gibbs with the Health Department. I'm here on behalf of the WIC program. Caitlin's been, um, would like approval for her into her staff. Jennifer went and wrote with clerks and Christie wanted her directions. To attend the National WIC Association Annual Education and Training Conference, which will be held in Chicago this year, April seventh through the tenth. This is all budget or in the WIC budget. Uh, they usually attend this every year. Um, and as usual, all, every one of my staff that attends a conference, I ask them to report back at a leadership meeting, which we told monthly. To show us what they learned and hopefully they're implementing some of those strategies that they learn at these conferences. Any questions on this one?
Not specific. Anybody?
And this is our conference season. It seems, seems like all the conferences are held in the spring anyway.
No, you're not the only one.
Oh, you're a lot.
Um, well, I would make a motion to approve the travel request for uh. The WIC Association Annual Education Training Conference.
Oh, second. It's been moved and seconded to recommend and approve the out-of-state travel request. Uh, for the National WIC Association Annual Education Training Conference. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Chair, please sign.
Thank you. Welcome.
Brittany, when you send that to small communities, let them know if they have any questions or need assistance at will, assisting with Wood O'Briens.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Tom Stiles from USDA State, he's really.
Mm-hmm, yep. Good, good.
He's gonna be good help, except for one of them, Keats. Where you started to say.
That'd be nice. That's where we'll get some of our federal money back if they're gonna dish it out somewhere. May as well try and get our share back.
Yeah.
Is that part of the uh, that infrastructure bill?
Don't believe so.
You know, it's a secret thing.
It starts with multiple rows and center yes.
Isn't the role of. You know, some wiring in the, using that MC cable. That stuff. Oh, you ever used that MC cable? Been electrical, pretty. That's the metal plate.
Oh, the metal stuff? Yeah, that's a pain.
See. It's, it, that's, that's sharp. Trying to get it. Hooked in the boxes and everything.
That's a pain.
Got, got a hope that. Only this, this thing survived.
Yeah, I uh take a motion before we.
Move recesses the Board of Health and we convene as the Board of County Commissioners.
On second half?
It's been seconded. We recessed as the Board of County Health and we convene as the Board of County Mission. All in favor?
Aye. That you'll have Mr. Fulman at ten.
What, three seconds?
About to change into some other. But you don't need a motion. Act as a board. You don't need to call yourself expensive.
We're not, we're not friends with you or something.
Be glad to know on Commissioner's call this morning, I made a pretty good ton of references to this. Said something about being on the other side of the fence, you know, unintended. I even got a chuckle out of Vivian.
That's not bad.
You're ready, Commissioners, this is your order, uh, in the fence you that you most recently, uh, had in front of you by the parties, of course, you were on site. Back at the end of July of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, it's hot.
As this indicates, there was an opportunity for council from the parties to. Work between the parties, see if they could reach agreement, when that was not possible by November. And then we scheduled it for that hearing, uh, that you had, and both parties were present, and also counsel for one of the parties. And this represents what your order is as a result of that, and assuming you agree, if you'll sign this. What will happen, and you've seen it, seen the draft, so, uh. Accurately reflects that draft, uh, your decision. And if you're going to sign this, and Rich, uh, verifies your signatures later today, then I will provide it to the parties or council.
Did we already, we already made a motion on it?
Well, you don't, you can, uh, you basically just need to sign it.
Okay.
Yeah, we approved it.
No, we don't, we don't need. You can make a motion if you want to, you can make an emotion, uh, to go ahead and sign the order if you want to clarify the record, had you thought about that.
I think it.
I think it's probably a good idea.
It's a big deal.
Probably a good idea. Um. Might go off of that.
Okay. For the homeowners' quality, yeah, again. I move to, uh, approve the order of signing partition fence responsibilities for the, uh, Nelson. See, other BS land LLC, Finsky.
I would second that.
Okay, uh, there's a motion, um, and second, um, ordered, uh, signing partition, uh, fence responsibility. To, uh, Roger and Penny Nelson, as well as the BS Land, uh, Trust LLC, all those in favor? All right.
Right.
Good idea, thank you for asking.
Since that's a tricky one, just get Cindy the language and what, how you'd like that.
Sure.
Motion, because I know this one's a sensitive one, could you make sure that you have everything in there you want?
You bet. They did a good job shortening it, won't be that long. Therefore, make sure.
Oh, it's on two sides, okay.
Send this out both by snail mail and. Okay.
Shouldn't that say Commissioner, I wonder, I know one of them came through, I don't know. I'm just seeing that moment.
That's just common language in statute. Chair, vice chair member.
Cause I saw one today that said Commissioner on it.
Yeah, it's, it's typically member.
Usually, just to designate the other side of the formal office for them. I like the elevators up on Capitol Hill. Does it mean member or non-member? Really?
The what?
Elevators up on the offices.
Member or non-member, huh?
Oh, really?
They can't be together.
Yeah. It's a big deal, I'm sure it is.
So if you're non-member and you get on there and they know you're a non-member, they throw you off, is that what it is? What happens?
They can. It's, it's a big deal for staffers, they could actually fire you.
Really?
Yeah.
Huh, interesting.
And self-service, or do they actually have an operator? Someone like, a couple of them have, uh, operators, most of them don't.
So like that old style elevator, it's the Capitol, I think those are cool.
Yeah, that's people that are visiting for the first time, they're literally taken aback by that.
The cage.
Yeah.
Why is it perfect driving? Asking me before.
Uh, did you decide plans, are you gonna need fifteen or twenty minutes?
And then, what do you mean?
Or Shelley, whoever.
There you go. See?
Twenty.
Already made the table, twenty, yeah. She was already that way, she showed that, she was that.
Contaminated, ouch.
I, I tried doing.
If you need two hours, just say so.
Yeah. Uh, we already, we already made an executive order on that. Executive sessions should be an hour or shorter.
Couldn't we move since that's the last one, executive session?
Just to try to ask Clancy.
John, since, um, Shelley's, um, executive session is at ten twenty, and that's the last one. Could you, could we move it up?
I'm good with that.
Talk to Clancy about this.
So you're good with that?
Fine, I'm here.
The problem is, we don't have anybody here to deal with the decision.
Oh. Uh, let me try and think of that.
Although I guess I could technically go up there and.
Make the call, Richie.
I knew that'd get somebody's stare up.
Not that you couldn't do it.
That Clancy fixed it.
There you go, that'll scare everybody then. I wouldn't say that, nobody trusts me. You send over, they want to go in the executive early. Thanks.
No, in this case, it's not, yeah, it's not like it's gonna be open to the public, can you? Not like there's anybody from the public actually here, anyway.
I don't see anybody.
Clancy, you just need one of these?
Yes.
That is a big clutch.
That's what I was thinking too. We can get you some shorter ones, Rich, if you need time to do that later, I mean, I can just get them all at the same time. Cause I've got a man with couple of them. You can just keep yours.
I'm trying.
Uh, that's on us.
That was real.
I was, I was.
Glad you suggested doing the motion.
Yeah.
And you end up with yours?
I move the County Commission, Lieutenant Chairman Ford, Vice Chair McKinley, Commissioner Hopey, recessing executive session. On potential litigation for the purpose of consultation with Shelley Woodard, Deputy County Counselor, Clancy Holman. County Counselor, Attorney for the Commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, an exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Your meeting to resume in the County Commission chambers at ten thirty.
I would second that.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded, that the County Commission moved into, um, executive session for a period of twenty minutes to discuss. Um. Um, with Shelley Woodard and Clancy Holman, that was in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I